Welcome to Burlington's Candidate Forum. My name is Alan Folds, and I'll be moderating the discussion. I'm joined by a press panel to ask the questions. On my far right is Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz. Next to her and between us is Chris Flaherty of BCAT News. At this session, we focus on the race for the school committee. We have three candidates for two, three-year positions. Christine Monaco is a longtime incumbent, a member of the board since 1992. Jeremy Brooks, who would bring his 24 years of military experience to the position, and Melissa Masado, a skilled project manager, expert at managing multiple projects. She feels she can use that experience on the committee. Welcome, everyone. We're going to start by going over the ground rules. Here is how we will proceed. Each candidate will offer a one-minute opening statement, and we've drawn lots for the order. After that, our press panel will ask questions of the candidates. Each candidate has 90 seconds to answer. We'll alternate between members of the press panel and we'll rotate through the candidates for the first response. Next, each candidate is allowed to ask one question of the other candidates, again with 90 seconds to respond. The question must be answerable by all. Finally, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement. We'll use the same order as the opening statements. The closing statement is the opportunity for rebuttals, two statements made by other candidates if they wish. In the interest of covering as many subjects as we can, we'll try to keep a close watch on the time, so frame your answers accordingly. If everyone's all set, we will get started. And Mr. Brooks, you are first.
Thank you, VCAT moderator, members of the press, viewers at home, and my fellow candidates. I grew up in Burlington, attended K-12 in the Burlington School System, left Burlington to join the Air Force, and retired after 24 years of service. I chose to move back to the community I grew up in and love, and I still answer the call to serve, this time at community level. I believe my experience, energy are best utilized as a school committee member. This position would also provide me with a more prominent voice in shaping policy, procedure that directly impact the education of all students in the system, not just my daughters. During my 24 years of service as an Air Force Special Warfare member, I have led small, large, multi-service, multinational organizations that are flat, agile, and hierarchical. As an organizational leader, I have championed building and infrastructure installation projects. As an operations manager, I have been instrumental in the role of providing for the daily needs of all personnel, forecasting and managing units' budgets. And lastly, I have been proven project manager with a track record of delivering projects on time and within budget. I am comfortable managing all aspects of a project from inception to closeout. My education includes a bachelor's in management and technology, and associate in information systems technologies, a Security Plus certification, a professional manager certification, and a business analytics certification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Second is Melissa Masado.
Thank you to the moderator, our hosts at BCAT, and the press here tonight, as well as my fellow candidates. Let me tell you more about myself. I graduated from Boston College with a degree in economics, and I also have an MBA from Bentley University. I'm currently a manager of product strategy at Athena Health, a healthcare technology company, and prior to this, I was a project manager for over 10 years. I'm on the Towns Transportation Committee, I am a co-president of Adopt a Class 2034, and a fundraiser for Boy Scout PAC 105. My husband and I moved to Burlington to raise our family. We have two boys, a kindergartner at Fox Hill Elementary School, and a preschooler at Mount Hope. Since I'm passionate about education, one of the reasons we chose to live in Burlington is because of the strong support for the schools. In my free time, you can find me skiing, biking, or hiking. As a parent of two future Burlington public school graduates, I want to join the school committee to bring a fresh perspective and an eye to the future in policy decisions. I also promise fiscal accountability for your tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And third is Ms. Monaco.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to BCAT, to Mr. Moderator, to Chris, to Nikki, and everyone participating in this event. We have an outstanding school system today, known for its academics, special services, activities, and caring staff. Despite the unprecedented challenges of the past two years, today we're looking forward and reaching higher for every Burlington student. Serving in the school committee is an important position. We oversee a huge budget, create policy that affects every student, and work closely with the town side of government. Experience matters on this committee. We represent you on critical educational and financial decisions. I take my responsibility to our students, families, and staff, and to all of our taxpayers very, very seriously. I'm Chris Monaco, and I deeply believe that education is the key to a good life and a better world. That's why I ask for your vote on April 9. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I said we would have our two press panelists asking questions, but we have a slight change in schedule. We had a third panelist, Melissa Russell of the Burlington Union. She is not here tonight, but she did pass one question on, and I will ask that question for her. The question is, how much does advocacy in other parts of the country around library book banning, Parents' Bill of Rights, and Don't Say Gay legislation concern you at the local level? How do we ensure students and teachers' safety regardless of who is on the board, or in the governor's office? And let's see, we will start with Ms. Monaco.
Well, that's an interesting question. I think we're very fortunate living in Massachusetts because we don't tend to have issues of that sort. Around the country, there's such a split with conservatism and liberalism, and I think it's really unfortunate that libraries and books are taking the brunt of this. I just don't see it ever happening in Burlington. Certainly, from a school committee perspective, I would never let it happen to the extent that it was within my power. I think we have a great governor. He's a Republican, but he certainly isn't into book burning. Who knows who the next governor will be, but I'm quite certain that those views will not permeate the Burlington school system any time in the future.
Okay, thank you. Next, Ms. Masado.
So I think these issues are concerning at a national level, and I think that you can't have a school committee election without thinking about some of those issues. I do think that the role of the school committee is setting some of the policies and things like that. So I think we have an equity audit coming up, and I hope that some of the equity policies and procedures will help us reflect the values of Burlington, which I don't believe involve book burning or banning or anything of that nature. And I would like to look to the school committee to be setting policies to make sure that all the values in Burlington are listened to, as well as making sure that all parents have a voice and that we can make policies that are reflective of the values of the town.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Brooks.
I'd just like to echo the statements of the other two candidates and add, while I don't believe it's a large problem that's going to happen in Massachusetts, it's absolutely something that must be accounted for and taken into account. I believe a lot of this could be solved by working with Mr. Porch and instituting a very robust and comprehensive DEI policy with a vision statement, mission statement, one, three, and five-year goals that address this. Along with the equity audit, as I mentioned in one of my virtual events, I pulled resources from other school committees in other districts that highlighted additions to curriculum, books that will be added, and what level they're added at, and at a granular level, to what grade they're added at. So that gives parents a very clear view of the content being added to the classroom and opens up the door for discussion if they agree or disagree with that content. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will turn to our press panel. We'll begin with Chris Flaherty of BCAT. Ask the question, and the first answer will be from Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Alan. First question, the teachers are without a contract as the negotiations between the BEA and the school committee are currently ongoing. Going forward, what are the priorities you'd focus on in reaching a resolution?
And Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so focusing on the priority would be, number one, getting all the appropriate parties in the room to continue the discussion. Also, two, in future discussions, I would start the negotiation earlier, set milestones and decision points that will guide those discussions and ensure that the contract negotiation happens smoothly and doesn't add the constraint of time to further add friction to the equation. Additionally, I would also like to be part of those discussions where the teachers are heard for all the viewpoints they want. So my understanding is, in the current negotiation, there were several things put on the table that were pulled off the table immediately, and I kind of believe we should give the teachers a voice and let them ask for what they want, let them feel that they're heard, and then maybe come to some kind of middle ground solution. Not that we can give everything that's asked for, but having them felt like they're heard was really important to me as well.
Okay, thank you. Same question, Ms. Masado.
As a priority for me, I think, I can't comment specifically on what is being negotiated, obviously behind closed doors, but I think honestly I would come to the table with the willingness to give the teachers whatever is in my power as a school committee member to give them. I think after the past few years that we've had, the teachers deserve, I know we have some of the highest-paid teachers in the state, I would love to say that Burlington has some of the highest-paid teachers in the state. I want that to continue. I think that they are the best teachers in the state, and I want them to earn as much as we fiscally can provide for them. I think that the game has changed in terms of educational paradigms, and if they're looking to change schedules or things like that, I really want to be open to listening to what the teachers offer. So without any real specifics, I really would come to the table with trying to give the teachers as much as we possibly can from a fiscal standpoint.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Monaco.
Well, we started teacher negotiations last March, so it has been a year, and we have been working very hard to come to an agreement. When we first met, the teachers had a lot of requests, and the school committee didn't. But as we worked through, we tried to come to agreements on many things, and we have. In fact, I think we're very, very close to a settlement. The biggest problem with the negotiations is that the teachers' union leadership wanted a shorter school year, and they wanted to add half-days. First, they asked for twice every month, and then they reduced that to once every month. And that is a difficult problem. We can work on reducing the length of the school year, that we can handle, but in order to add half-days to the schedule, we would have to lengthen every other school day because time on learning, which is a state requirement, 900 hours at the elementary level, and 990 hours at the secondary level, we cannot meet those requirements with the school day the way it is right now. We have very short school days compared to other communities. We do, however, have a slightly longer school year. We have an extra three days. So that's what we're working through, and we have to consider parents. Parents should have a say in a change like that. I think that for a change like that, there needs to be a broad-based committee that looks at what everybody can live with and be happy with, and I would strongly recommend that for the next negotiating session. As far as money goes...
We're going over the times.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, you stopped. Okay, all right, we'll move on to our next question. This one will come from Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz, and we'll shake up the order of responses a little bit. Nikki.
Great. Burlington is home to many students who do not see themselves thoughtfully represented in BPS staff policies and curriculum. Additionally, in 2021, students in both the Black and Hispanic Latino subgroups were outperformed on MCAS at almost every grade level and subject area by white and Asian students. So this is a two-part question. First, what policies would you be most passionate about sponsoring in partnership with the administration to help reduce this disparity in achievement? And second, how would you ensure that an inclusive, welcoming environment was present for racial and ethnic minorities in our student body?
Okay, we'll begin with Melissa for this question.
As far as policies, I will likely defer to Mr. Porch and some of the results of the equity audit. I would love to see an equity and inclusion policy, or more robust equity policies. I would love to see some specific equity targets built into our district improvement plans, as well as some specific targeted educational awareness and extra learning. I'm trying to remember the second part, Nikki.
Oh, the second part was, how would you ensure an inclusive and welcoming environment for racial and ethnic minorities in our student body?
Sure. Again, I would love to see more representation at all levels. I think we would need to probably also look at hiring policies, some recruitment retention policies for the teachers, the administration, things like that, so the students can see themselves represented in the teachers. And I think that that will help create the more inclusive culture. I would love to see, I know the students at the high school have done a lot with equity. I would love to see their recommendations on policies. I know we've had issues of parent-teacher conferences falling on Ramadan, and I'd love to see more inclusive committees and review for events and additional cultural opportunities for all the students.
Okay, thank you. Next, Jeremy Brooks.
I'd like to again echo what Melissa said. I believe a tight policy that's very comprehensive will help move the ball forward with this. Couple that with the results of the equity audit to find out where we're at, where our gaps are, and then, you know, we have to neutralize, we find the deltas from where we're at. Addition to that, too, as I thought about this problem, I thought about how can we leverage technology to make this happen? And, you know, I felt I kind of landed on, how come we're not adding artificial intelligence and machine learning to the data points that students are creating every day with their iPads scrolling through books? This can be leveraged in a way that easily identifies kids that have learning gaps, educational disparities based on race, and will provide information in real time at the edge to the teachers to make those interventions happen in real time, so we don't have to wait for an IEP, you don't have to wait for a 504. You know, we can kind of move forward and neutralize those gaps before the equity audit even comes out. In addition, sorry, but one more point. I believe we can use federal funding for this through the American Rescue Plan. I read an article last night that was from ed.gov that specifically references that as a COVID response. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much. The next question will return to Chris Flaherty.
Ms. Monaco.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Excuse me.
Yeah, you missed me.
Sorry about that.
I don't know how, but, so, I'm not sure that policies are going to help. I think we have policies that should already be helping, and if we need more, then we should have more. But what we really need to do is figure out why there's a disparity, and what's it got to do with? There has to be a reason. If there's really a disparity between races, that is something that you really have to look at. I mean, I think there's a very large Indian population in Burlington schools, and most of those kids, they do great in school. So I really don't know how you figure it out, but what you have to do is figure it out. What's the problem? What's causing the problem? And then you have to fix the problem. If it takes a policy, that's wonderful. We'll put in every policy possible, but every student should have the opportunity to excel in our schools, and we work very hard. Maybe we need to work harder to make that happen. To ensure equity, obviously, we've been talking about the equity audit, and I hope it's successful. I know that there were parents who were concerned because they didn't understand the equity audit, what it was about, and there was a permission slip to pull kids out of class to talk to, nobody knew what it was for. It was to pull kids out and I guess have small group discussions, but parents, some parents are like, yeah, sure, anything, and other parents are like, I'm nervous. And I think one of the things we have to do is communicate better. Parents should have known why their kids were getting pulled out, what it was going to be like, whether it was scary, whether it was, it turns out everything was fine, and it was great. We need the equity audit, we need the results of it, and we need to implement them.
All right, now we'll move on to Chris's question.
With the worst of the pandemic, hopefully, behind us, what's the biggest issue you see the committee facing in the upcoming year, and how would you address it?
In this time, we'll start with Christine.
Okay, the biggest issue I see from the pandemic in schools is, well, it's twofold. We have a social-emotional problem, mental health. The pandemic was not a natural state for students. They went into depression, they gained weight, they had a miserable two years, and we have to fix that. We have to do everything in our power to fix that. The other thing that happened was students fell behind. Not every student. Some students could excel easily, learning remotely, learning through hybrid, taking online classes with Middlesex Community College, but a great number of students did fall behind, and we have Tier 2 financing from the federal government that we are using currently to help bring those kids back to where they should be, where they would have been without the pandemic. But honestly, the thing that worries me the most is the mental health and the social-emotional issues that have been a result of this, and we need to do everything possible to fix it.
Thank you. Same question to Melissa.
So as we move forward from the pandemic, I absolutely agree that the mental health crisis and learning loss are two top priorities for the school system, and I think I want the school committee to be able to support those in any way possible. But I do think that the largest issue right now with the school committee in general is some of the building projects that are upcoming. I think we need to have some better plans in place for basically three buildings that need to be addressed in the very short term. So I think I would like to see the school committee really take a holistic look at the building needs in this town, the renovations at Burlington High School, renovations at Pine Glen, and the replacement at Fox Hill. I think we need to take a big look at the whole picture and really put a strategy in place on how we're planning to address those, how we're planning to fund those, and how we're going to move forward in the short term as we address those issues.
Thank you. And finally, Jeremy.
Okay, so to speak to the COVID learning gaps and the social-emotional well-being of the students, absolutely agree that it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I believe it can be addressed in many of the ways that other candidates said, but I think we could also add a resiliency component to it, to posture ourselves better for the future if we have another public health emergency, to give our kids some pre-stress inoculation where they have tools in their toolbox to help them to not get to such a grave state. I'd also like to echo Melissa's concerns. We have a lot of building projects, we have a lot of money we have to spend, and we have to do it rather quickly, right? So to kind of solve that challenge, I propose a 10 to possibly 20-year long-range calendar capturing the cost drivers for those building projects, prioritizing them, and then additionally adding the lifecycle cost components to maintaining all the buildings in the school system so we maintain a high state of building readiness and just, you know, good facilities to teach in.
Thank you. All right, for our next question, we go back to Nikki Cadillac, and go ahead.
All right. A parent contacts you, concerned because their child came home from school today, saying she's not sure anymore if she's a boy or a girl because a student in her class started dressing differently and going by a different name. The parent is concerned and says, I don't want my kid learning about this stuff at school. How do you respond?
And we'll start with Mr. Brooks.
So number one, that's a very challenging question, right? So a lot of parents have very mixed emotions about it. Some are very for it, some are very against it. I truly believe in, you know, parents' rights in that aspect where those sort of things are definitely conversations that need to be had at home, but in the off-chance it happens at school, you know, I believe teachers should be empowered to address some of those concerns and not necessarily muzzle to where they can't speak about it. If an inquisitive child speaks up in class or it comes up in natural conversation, I don't think we should muzzle teachers to where they can't acknowledge it and acknowledge it's happening. Also, too, there is a, you know, age-appropriate component to this, right? So if it's an elementary school, how do you deal with that, you know, without really kind of try to sexualize kids or push too much sexual education onto them at too early of an age? And how do you frame that conversation in a context that they can comprehend would be the biggest challenge?
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Monaco.
I think if a child comes home from school with that concern, I think the parent needs to directly talk to their child and help them to understand the reality of what the situation is. I think parents have very close, comfortable relationships with their children, and they should be able to address that and explain it in an age-appropriate way and not have the children be concerned, worried, or upset. In addition, I think that they should work with the teachers directly if it's necessary. If you need to talk to the teacher and find out how it's being presented in the classroom, that's great. Talk to the teacher and work it out, and take your concerns any way you have to take them. But the most important thing is the comfort level of the children, and make sure that they are comfortable in these discussions and are not upset, are not, you know, having reactions that don't fit or not, rebelling against another child, or any of the negative things that would happen. Am I out of time?
Not yet.
Okay, so I want to address the buildings, so I don't know how much time I've got.
You have about 15 seconds.
All right, it's not enough really, but I'll do a little bit. Our buildings are being taken care of as we wait for the building projects to be completed. And I think what I'll do is try to fit this in in another question.
And finally, Ms. Masado.
Sure. As a parent, I would absolutely reassure my child and answer any of his questions and help him understand what the other child is going through. I certainly would reach out to my child's teacher, just because I feel like, as a parent, those lines of communication are always open and should be always open. And I know my child's teacher has always encouraged me to reach out to her with what's going on with my child, and I think she wants to understand what's going on in her classroom. So I think that I would just keep the lines of communication open and help the teacher figure out how to communicate it to the rest of the class and other parents. And I think just keeping that line of communication open and being there to support my student and other students in the class would be my priority.
Thank you. Okay, the next question will come from Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you. While we may be nearing the end of our long battle against COVID, there's been a lot of tension at school committee meetings throughout the pandemic in regards to COVID practices such as in-person versus remote learning and the effectiveness of masks, social distancing, and vaccines. As a leader in the school system, how would you help to relieve these tensions?
And we'll start with Ms. Masado.
Sure. I think as a school committee member, I would just welcome the open and honest and respectful discussion. I think, I commend our school committee. I think that it was always respectful conversation. I think we heard from many sides. I think just providing more of a voice for some of the parents, I think, would help the school committee understand the real desires and the needs. I think a feedback loop would help understand. I think there may be, I mean, hopefully never again, but there may be a day that we have to revisit some of these conversations, and I think really just staying respectful and really trying to listen to what the teachers are saying, and I think some of the role of the superintendent as well to advocate for the best of our students, I think I would just be, you know, ears open, mouth shut.
Okay, same question, Ms. Monaco.
Yes, so when COVID hit, we had to close schools, and really from March until June, there was very little schooling going on. That was not last school year, but the year before. We spent months negotiating an MOA with the teachers' union to go back to school with clean air, and we had a choice. We could go back either remotely, or we could go back hybrid, and we chose both. So we actually set up a remote academy, which was very, very successful. Some people wish we had kept it. We also had a hybrid option, where half the students went to school the beginning of the week and half went the end the week and half went the end of the week. And throughout that year, we had to do that because of social distancing, masking. Throughout the year, as things eased, I worked really, really hard with the superintendent to make changes, especially at the middle school, to get the students back in school more time. And also, thankfully, many of the teachers were willing to do real-time learning while they were conducting class. They also had the kids at home, and live streaming. And that was so important, and it meant so much to the kids. And then towards the end of the year, we were able to get children back, and it just, you know, made all the difference in the world. So this is a topic for me that has, you know, I've lived it, I've done it, I know what it was like, I know how difficult it was, and I hope we never have to do it again.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brooks.
So again, interesting question. As a member of a unit, I had to keep my unit open as an essential worker, so I never was able to close. I instituted policies that resulted in no contact-traced COVID cases to my unit. What I believe we could do, again, beating policy to death here, right? Good policy lets people know, gives them a predictable outcome. So good policy that has limited scope and duration if we were to implement some kind of mandate, which I'm not in favor of. And then, again, just very defined gates of when we're going to institute policies, when we're going to institute protective measures, how we're going to do it, and very big communication. Again, another component to that is doing the postmortem on the COVID policies that were in place. How effective were they? How were they implemented? Where did we fall short? How can we do better? And I feel like that's really important to do that, take that holistic view and not be so myopic to think, hey, let's look at the next emergency. Let's take the lessons learned from the past, couple that with what we know now, and then try to come up with the best solution possible in a very progressive and determined manner of implementation.
Okay, thank you. Our next question comes from Ms. Cadillac.
Great. How many questions do I have time for? Because I need to prioritize at this point, I think.
This could be the last one.
Could be the last one.
I'll have the answers out.
Okay. Okay. How students get to and from school and how much transportation is subsidized has been an issue for years, and this has only become exacerbated since the COVID-19 pandemic. What does the school committee need to do in the next three years to ensure that our kids can get to school safely but while also being fiscally and environmentally responsible?
And we'll begin with Christine Monaco.
Okay, so I'm going to give you a quick answer and go to schools, okay? We bus all of us students. Any student who wants a bus gets a bus. And fiscally, it is what it is. We believe that it's safest to offer children busing. If they want to get to school a different way, that's great, but it's very important to us to have a safe way for kids to get to school. Relative to the buildings, we work very hard to keep all of our buildings in good shape, even when they need to be repaired, replaced, upgraded. So Burlington High School, yes, it needs a lot of work, but Burlington High School is in very, very good shape for a building as old as it is. We do need to rehab it, and it will be a very expensive project. We are currently in the process of doing Fox Hill. We're in the feasibility study. We have SBA reimbursement already, and that's moving forward. Pine Glen, we work, every year we do upgrades to Pine Glen, but it will need a bigger overhaul later on in the game. So it's important to work carefully with the town side, with the financial team, and to get the money, because the last thing we want to do is rush a project that does not need to be rushed in order to just get it done when it's going to cost the taxpayers too much money. So it's very important to work with the town side and with the bonding schedule. Now, there are some things on the bonding schedule that can be moved, can be pushed out, like, for instance, I'd love to have a hockey rink, but we don't need it this year, we don't need it next year. We need our schools fixed. And so we're on the road with Fox Hill, and BHS is next, and then Pine Glen.
Okay, thank you very much. Same question, Jeremy Brooks.
Okay, so I'm going to have to give Melissa big kudos on this one. She's been way out in front of this with her transportation and sidewalks initiative. I think one of the ways to offset the costs is to be reducing routes, and those kids that choose to, due to her Safe Sidewalks initiative, could really reduce the number of buses we're using. I also agree with Ms. Monaco that if a child wants to get on a bus, we absolutely are, you know, we have the obligation to provide that bus for that student and get them to school safely. Turning back to the schools as well, I did have a question if we have time, Ms. Monaco. The MSBA funding, my understanding is it's a 270 process, we're about 90 days in. So my understanding is that funding isn't necessarily assured at this point, and we still have a long way to go with funding this project and figuring out the fiscal constraints of these two very large efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Melissa Masato.
Sure. I am super passionate about transportation to and from school. I joined Burlington's Transportation Committee to basically bring the Safe Routes to School program to Burlington. It's a state and national program that encourages alternate methods of transportation. It is not trying to take a bus away from anyone. I am 100% in favor of free and available busing to all students. But Safe Routes to School helps the town encourage those who want to walk, bike, or roll to school and do it safely and in a supported manner. So I've currently brought that program to Fox Hill, and we're going to have, one of the first programs is going to start in April, and in May, we will have, there's a national Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day. So I'm going to really encourage that program. I think using this program, we can leverage tons of state resources, so they can audit our transportation and tell us where we can make improvements. Also, after a year that we've been engaged with the program, we're eligible for state and federal funding, so we can get dollars to improve our sidewalks, add crossing guards, add lighted, flashing signs at crosswalks, and things like that. So I would love to encourage, reduce the traffic at the elementary schools, in the middle school, I know, in the high school, at all levels. I think, I know that traffic is an issue. I would love to use some of these resources to make sure that we have higher-quality buses so that maybe we could encourage more people to take a bus and not take a car, or consolidate bus routes if we have higher-quality busing routes and transportation. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to improve the transportation in Burlington, and I look forward to being on the school committee to implement a lot of those measures.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we move to the next phase of the debate. Each of you gets to ask the other two candidates one question, and it has to be answerable by both. So we will start with the question from Jeremy Brooks.
Excuse me, I got to consult my notes real quick. Okay. So we kind of touched on this, we didn't have a long time to talk about it, so I kind of feel like it bears a revisit, right? With current fiscal constraints, increased demand signal for special education and counseling services in the district, how will you ensure needs are met without increased staffing? Really, example is, how can we gain efficiencies to improve the usage of high-demand, low-density resources within our school?
Okay, and that first question, we'll go first to Melissa Masato.
Sure. I think, I do think that special education is somewhere where we need to focus on the district, on improving some of the culture and access to services. So I do think we have some opportunities with relief funds from the federal government, and I think the town is already taking advantage of that to provide resources in those areas. I think that really, some of the, I would love to work with the CPAC to identify those specific areas that you mentioned of low-density, high-impact. So I would really love to leverage the CPAC to understand where, you know, I think you could consider low-hanging fruit that we could really capitalize on and improve those services.
Thank you. And the same question to Christine Monaco.
Yes, I think one of the last places I would try to consolidate is in special ed. I've been a member of CPAC. It used to be called PAC, and since its inception, I've been involved in it, first as a member and now as a liaison to CPAC. It is a wonderful group of people, parents who know their children and know what they need, and I support them wholeheartedly. We have an advantage here in Burlington in that, yes, we have a special ed budget, but we also have a wonderful financial team in town that supports our very expensive programs by paying for them out of the town's accommodated account. So we put in a preschool, an integrated preschool, and it's paid for through the accommodated account, as is out-of-district tuitions and out-of-district transportation. We put in two programs at Pine Glen, which will now be moving to the middle school. And again, the selectmen and the town finance team, they have been so good and so generous that they pay for those out of the accommodated account because the increases in special ed would break the school budget. It would really be a strain. So I'm sure there are some areas that we might be able to consolidate in, or not hire people, but certainly not in special education. That is an area where we absolutely need the funding, and we have the help of the town, and I could not appreciate that help more. Thank you to the town finance team.
Okay, thank you. Our second question to the candidates comes from Melissa Masato.
Sure. At this week's school committee meeting, Mr. Larkin mentioned that he wanted to get parent feedback on the proposed school calendar. Obviously, equity is a high priority for our school district. How can the district solicit and utilize parent feedback systematically and equitably rather than having parents with the loudest voices being heard and supported?
And that will go first to Jeremy Brooks.
Yeah, to continue on my technology theme, right? Let's push out more surveys to parents. It's pretty easy to set up a survey on Google Forms. It's automatically tabulated, who wants what, so that'll give us great insight into where we need to put our resources and energy to do that, how we ensure it's equitable. I think you touched on it earlier. Basically, we do that deep dive, we do the review. Before we push out a calendar, you know, we take into account sensitivities for cultures, religions, special holidays that, you know, aren't necessarily as mainstream as others, you know, to make sure we have a good capture on everything and all the holidays we need to respect and observe. Also, too, you said systematically, equitably, and that was the last part? I apologize if I feel like I missed something.
No, you got it, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now the same question, Christine Monaco.
I think parent input is important in every aspect of the school department, including the calendar. I know there are some people who really don't like to go back to school before Labor Day, and there are other people who really do like to go back to school before Labor Day. The most difficult part of setting a calendar is that we have to coordinate it with the teacher's contract. We have to fit all the days in, and we have to fit them in the right places, and we need to take into consideration, as Jeremy said, the religious holidays and all other sorts of things that are very important to people. So I don't really know the extent to which parents' input will change the calendar. I think he was referring to whether parents would like staff development days clumped together or whether they'd like them spread out over the school year. And I know some people, some parents, really enjoy taking a two-days off and going somewhere with their children and families while the teachers have their staff development days. On the other hand, if it's better to have them spread out, it's fine with the school committee. You know, it can be parent input, teacher input, any input, we're very happy to try and accommodate. But the beginning of the year is dependent on when Labor Day falls, and the end of the year is dependent on how many days we have to call school off, for snow, or it can be rain, or any number of mostly weather-related things.
Okay, thank you very much. And for the final question, we return to Christine Monaco.
Okay, so this is my question. When you're running for school committee, especially the first time, it's very easy to look for things that you think are wrong and how you might be able to change them and fix them. So what I would like to know from the other two candidates is, at Burlington High School, what strengths do you see that you could talk about as good and great things that we are currently doing?
And we will go to Melissa for the first answer.
Sure. I think there's a ton of great things. I recently met with Dr. Conti and got a tour of the high school, so that was fantastic. I think there's a lot of programming and parts of the building that I didn't know existed. So I think Burlington High School is fantastic. I know I would probably lean on our curriculum. We recently saw a presentation of some of the new classes. I think that Burlington keeps up with the times, so to speak, as far as adding curriculum, like robotics courses, STEMs courses, computer courses, as the demand comes. I think there's tons of activities. Dr. Conti pointed out that they have kind of a Genius Bar in the library that offers support for the district, for the iPads and things like that, sponsored by the students. I think that's an incredible program. I think it's a large school, and I think that there's opportunities around the school for everyone, a lot of activities. I know we have a great robotics team, things like that. So I think, I would like to say in general that we have something for everyone, and I'm really proud of Burlington High School.
Thank you. And finally, Jeremy.
Okay, thanks, Christine, because you let me talk about something really jazzed about technology, right? We have a great computer program here. I think there's room for improvement. I think we can invest additional resources for our program. Let's get into backend, frontend web development. That's a very artistic field that maybe isn't quite the mainstream in an art curriculum. Let's get into networking, coding, because that's today's foreign language, right? Also, too, fantastic arts department. You know, I think we had, what, six kids in the art show in Lexington? There was, I think it was a district-setting record of like 25 that went to the competition. Excuse me. So yeah, reinvest in those. Let's put more money into that. You know, and quite frankly, I wouldn't mind seeing a shop class come back because that was one of my favorite things as a student. Man, that was really just that mental break for me that let me de-stress, do some of my hands, and, you know, get back at learning later in the day.
Thank you very much. Well, that brings us to our closing statements, which you each have two minutes for, and we will begin as we started the session with Jeremy.
Okay. So as a school committee member, I know that my charge will be to set policy, advocate, and ensure proper and fiscally responsible budgeting, providing for the school system and oversight of the administration. I also believe that as an elected official, it is a duty to address student and parent concerns, and being a collaborative member within the community at large and within town government entities that interface with the community, and to foster enhanced and transparent communication. I have experience managing projects with acquisition values exceeding $300 million to deliver capabilities on time and on budget. Couple that with the experience working with the highest levels of government, answering to the Director of Special Programs at the Office of the Undersecretary of Defense. This experience demonstrates that I possess this knowledge, skills, and ability to serve on this committee. I have an extensive record serving with the veteran community, volunteering with Habitat for Humanity, volunteering Korean orphanages, and volunteering with Korean students acting as a conversational English mentor. I'll provide fresh vision, bold new ideas for problem-solving, valuable leadership and planning expertise to address challenges within the system. Additionally, I seek to be not only a vocal advocate for concerns brought to the committee, but to foster community participation and interaction during committee meetings. At the same time, I'd like to make all documentation and policy more accessible in a consolidated, well-organized location on the BPS website, and truly bring the Burlington school system into the digital age. I humbly ask you for your consideration and your vote on April 9th, and I'd like to thank BCAT, members of the press, and the moderator for putting this on tonight and giving us all a platform to hear our views. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And your closing statements, Melissa.
Sure. Again, I want to echo Jeremy, and thank you for hosting, and BCAT, and the journalists here. Thank you for this opportunity. Burlington has had great schools, but the challenges of post-COVID learning in a turbulent world require innovative and forward-looking planning. There are three roles of a school committee member: financial responsibility for our $69 million budget, setting policy, and hiring and supervising the superintendent. If the school committee provides appropriate oversight, sets sound policy, and supports the superintendent, then the systems work correctly. I want to ensure that the systems are working as they should to provide students and families with what they need, especially in the areas of special education, so that students equitably get appropriate services. I prepared for this debate by watching the 2016 and the 2020 debates, and I'm saddened that some of the issues that we're talking about today, we have been talking about for six years. I want to join the school committee to start moving things forward and take some action. I look forward to leveraging my private sector project management experience and project oversight, including major building activities that the district needs to undertake in the next decade. next decade. Having managed large budgets, I promise strict accountability for our district's budget. I have the expertise to guide the development of a strategy that will support the growing and changing needs of the community during a historically challenging era. My approach will be enriched by my day-to-day experience as a current district parent who's familiar with the unique challenges that our children are facing today. As our students and teachers are constantly adapting to the rapidly changing world, I'm ready, willing, and able to meet those challenges and support our teachers. I'm excited about the many opportunities that await on the school committee to help shape our district for our children's future. Please support me and Melissa Masado with one of your two votes on April 9th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, your closing remarks, Christine Monaco.
First of all, thank you all for hosting us and asking us the questions. The school committee, our current school committee, supported and secured funding for our own integrated preschool, new special ed programs, full-day kindergarten, the Sprouts program, before and after-school care, and so much more. We have small class sizes. We're committed to small class sizes. We have led the Commonwealth on expanding commuter science, computer science instruction. We introduced one-to-one iPads and coding to every grade. We have award-winning robotics teams, renowned art and music departments, and the very best athletic teams. Our core academics are second to none. We work hard. Burlington testified before the Board of Higher Education to allow computer science to count as a math or science class in mass corps as opposed to simply an elective. That is now in effect. Burlington High School is very competitive with our graduates going on to prestigious colleges and universities. Our dual enrollment program, internship program, and advanced placement programs are outstanding. Our seniors can graduate now with 15 college credits through using dual enrollment. We have a wonderful, dedicated staff. We have a beautifully diverse community of families and students. We have soaring property values. Burlington is an awesome place to live. Right now, the school committee needs experience and consistency, along with educational and fiscal responsibility. I hope you will support my candidacy so that I can continue my work for all of our children. Please give me one of your votes on April 9th. Thank you.
Well, thank you. We've reached the end. In closing, I'd like to thank all of the candidates, Christine Monaco, Melissa Masado, and Jeremy Brooks, not only for sharing their vision with the people of Burlington, but also offering their time and service to the town. Thank you to Nikki Cadillac of the Burlington Buzz and Chris Flaherty of BCAT News. And finally, thank you to Jen Dodge and the rest of the staff and volunteers here at BCAT. Remember, Election Day is Saturday, April 9th. The polls at the high school are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Here is your chance to have a direct say in how your town is governed. Make sure you take advantage of that right and responsibility. And thank you for watching.